Yeah, I will call to order the November 5th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get through some administrative board work. We have a continuance after that, and then we'll get on to some new plans and conceptual plans. Approval of minutes, Mr. Rug, do we have any approval of minutes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will move that we accept the minutes of October 8th, 2025 as presented.
I have a motion for Mr. Rug, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Jeff, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, and the minutes have been approved. All right, Kelly, regional impact determinations.
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
Fantastic, and discussions with town staff?
I'm all set.
John? Good? Fantastic, all right, we do have one continuance here, this would be item number, or is it E and F, Kelly, or just F?
E and F, one as a hearing, one as a conceptual.
Conceptual, okay, perfect. I am gonna take these one at a time, looking for a motion to continue the public hearing on a compliance alternative request at 44 Pillsbury Road, map 10 lot 15, Zoned Woodmont Commons, PUD, PUD 1 and AR 1, Pillsbury Realty Development LLC is the owner, Procopio Companies is the applicant. Looking for a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion from Mr. Rug, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second from Lynn, all in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
John Cruz, aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair votes in the affirmative, the public hearing on a compliance alternative request of 44 Pillsbury Road has been continued to the meeting next week, the 12th. All right, and the second one, I'm looking for a motion to continue a conceptual discussion located at 44 Pillsbury Road, Zoned Woodmont Commons, PUD, and AR 1, Pillsbury Realty Development LLC is the owner, Procopio Companies is the applicant, looking for a motion.
That's continued to the 12th.
To the 12th, correct.
Okay, so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion for Mr. Rug, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second from Lynn, all in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
John Cruz, aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair votes in the affirmative, these two items have been moved to next week's meeting. I don't know if there's anybody here for that, but it's next week.
Just in case.
Wonderful. All right, let's see, I am going to start with a public hearing on an application for a rezoning request to rezone approved subdivision lots 23 through 51, map 16 lot 9, zoned from split zoning AR 1 and Industrial 1 to AR 1, Evans Family Limited Partnership is the owner and the applicant. Evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening.
Give me one second here.
I think there's, uh...
There shouldn't be anything to do on it, no. All right, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, my name is Rob Deegan with SNH Land Services, representing the Evans Family Limited Partnership for this application, as, of course, as the Board remembers, we were here earlier this year, got conditional approval on this proposed subdivision, and part of that application is asking to move the zone line between the AR 1 zone and the industrial zone, which runs through the property, so that it, on the line between the proposed lots and the remainder lot. And of course, this is the first step in getting that line relocated as part of our conditional approval.
All right, bear with me for one second here. John, do you have anything, sir?
Nope, nothing this evening.
Kelly?
All set, Mr. Chair.
All right, I will, we'll go to the Board here, we'll open it up to the public, and then we'll make some decisions, anybody from the Board have any questions? Seeing none, I will open it up to the public, this is a public hearing, come on up, going once, going twice, all right, and we will close the public hearing. Well, it's pretty straightforward, I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Oh, move that we recommended to the Town Council, approval of the rezoning request to rezone approved subdivision lots 23 to 51 Wilson Road, tax prep 16 lot 9, from split zoning agricultural residential 1 and industrial 1 to AR 1 agricultural residential, Evans Family Limited Partnership is the owner and the applicant.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a second from Lynn, all in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
John Cruz, aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber abstain.
And the Chair votes in the affirmative, this motion has been approved. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, next up, public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan for a warehouse at 42 Wentworth Avenue, along with a conditional use permit for 6,874 square feet of buffer impacts, map 14 lot 44-36, Zoned Industrial 2 and AR 1, Yelso LLC, Textile Coated International is the owner, and Stephen W. Tippert is the applicant. Evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening.
Before we get going, on your side, we are gonna check this for completeness, it looks like there are no outstanding checklist items, I would be...
Chair, sorry.
Yeah?
I missed two things that were missing from the checklist.
Oh, sure.
Water, the utility clearance letter for water, and the wetland certification, so if that can be added to the conditions.
Yep.
You have to waive, waive those requirements for acceptance.
Yep. So, just to be clear, that was a utility clearance letter and a wetland?
For water.
Water. Water what?
Water service.
Water service, okay. All right, I am looking for a motion to accept this as complete for acceptance purposes only, which would also move these two items to a condition of approval.
Mr. Chair?
You should ask for it.
What's up?
You should, the applicant, proper way would be for the applicant to ask you to waive these four, to look forward with completeness and then place them as conditions of approval.
Jason Lopez, Keach Nordstrom Associates, here on behalf of Yelso LLC, with me tonight, John Tippett and Ed Frichette, both representatives from Yelso LLC, ask the Board to approve, approve waivers for those two items for plan acceptance.
So, I would be looking for a motion to accept this as complete with the condition that these become a condition of approval.
That sounds good, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion for Mr. Rug, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Lynn, all in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
John Cruz, aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair votes in the affirmative, all right. Go ahead.
There we go, all right. So, as I mentioned, Jason Lopez, Keach Nordstrom Associates, proposal tonight is to construct a 24,000 square foot warehouse for storage of products that are manufactured by a local manufacturer here in town. Little history with the property, property was created as part, the lot was created as part of the ecological industrial park back in 2000, 2001, there was a site plan approved for this site, for a 61,200 square foot warehouse, site work had started in 2007, there was a letter issued that gave vesting to that site plan. Part of that process, there was some land clearing, regrading, construction of a couple detention ponds, there was an access driveway going in. That project had what was then a site-specific permit that has since been re-established as the alteration of terrain, the current drainage system to go with that vested site plan could not get current day approval through alteration of terrain, so that's why we're before the Board with a new site plan. So, since 2001, the town has adopted wetland setbacks, and that has a little bit of impact on the development of this site, and we're gonna have a CUP that goes with this application that needs to be addressed due to development, building on the lot, and some previous work that was done in what is now the CO wetland buffer district. The property is located on Wentworth Ave, you head by, out by Stonyville Farm, head out to the end of the cul-de-sac, it's beyond the power lines, not really gonna see much of the, the building itself from the, the public road. Property is 13.7 acres, contains about two and a half acres of wetlands, no wetland impacts on the property, as I discussed, there are some impacts to the CO buffer. Wetland mapping has been completed, it was more of a scheduling conflict of why that stamp is not on the plan, it was on an earliest submission for the design review, we had the soil mapping complete, we have presented the project to division of historical resources, no historic properties affected, Natural Heritage Bureau report did come back with endangered, threatened species, some snakes, turtles, birds, plant, and the cotton-tail rabbit. We have coordinated with New Hampshire Fish and Game and incorporated all their requirements into the design, and all their requirements are noted, as you see up on the screen on, on the cover sheet. The project is also subject to, there's a memorandum of understanding between the Town of London Dairy and New Hampshire Fish and Game for the cotton-tail rabbit, there's a fee assessed by New Hampshire Fish and Game for relocating the rabbits prior to construction, so that will be fulfilled. The design includes connection to Manchester Water Works, we've already talked to them, they're on board with our design, they've reviewed our design, the issue is, is when the driveway that leads into the property was constructed, there was a 12-inch water main installed under that pavement, it appears that that installation was never inspected, so Manchester Water Works is withholding their utility clearance letter until such time that that water line is exposed in a few locations, and they're comfortable that it was installed according to their requirements. Upon, you know, witnessing a couple test pits, they'll issue a clearance letter, so, kind of a little bit of cop before the horse here. Underground utilities will be placed, there's already vault in front of the, you know, property, continue underground into the, the building, drainage is gonna be closed drainage to a subsurface chamber system behind the building, and then it heads out into a detention infiltration pond, it's gotta go, stormwater design will go through alteration of terrain for review and approval. We have, I'll say, a little bit of a conflict or a discussion that needs to take place on wastewater, the site, back when that original subdivision was approved, it had a note on the plan stating that all lots shall be serviced by municipal sewer by way of private force main with the easements provided, septic system shall not be permitted. So, we have in the plan set a design and layout for connecting into the sewer force main that's existing in the roadway, leads down Wentworth Ave to a gravity manhole. The concern that we have, and we've added into the proposal, the location of an onsite septic system, but since the Planning Board, the prior Planning Board, had put a condition on the site plan for, you know, it has to connect to sewer, no septic's permitted, we need to have that discussion with the Board to explain why, but we're, we're proposing an onsite septic system, and we've demonstrated that we could connect to sewer. What it, what it is, is this site is pretty much gonna be unmanned, storage, warehousing for the local company, when they have deliveries come in, they'll, they'll send some employees over and, you know, manage deliveries, you know, shipping and receiving, but it's not gonna be manned all the time, so we're talking about 10 gallons a day per person is what DES requires for flows, might have a couple people there one day, it might be a week, two weeks, then, you know, half dozen people there, it's gonna vary, so our concern is with a small grinder pump pumping into the system, the, the length of the line is so long that it's gonna take four cycles of the pump before the wastewater ever reaches the gravity manhole, that's gonna cause two issues, wastewater goes anaerobic, and, you know, you get corrosion of the pumps, doesn't, doesn't last, you know, as long as it should, also, because the wastewater is sitting, it's a grinder pump, wastewater sits in the force main, the, the solids have a tendency to settle out and, and stick on the inside of the pipe, it's gonna create extra maintenance issues, so what we're proposing is to put a gravity sewer, septic system on site, because of the low flows, should the, you know, should they expand operation there, increase the capa, you know, number of people, it makes sense at that time to go into a sewer connection, it's just maintenance and, you know, problems that way, but that was an old condition on an old approved site plan, so we can come back and discuss that a little bit more. Parking, we have eight parking spaces in front of the building, Conservation Commission requested that we take an additional eight parking spaces we had on the side, and just construct those in the future if they're needed, because there's such a low demand for parking based on the number of people on site, we, we agreed to that. Storage, no outdoor storage proposed, just, you know, the dumpster on the back of the building, we have a landscape plan as part of the, the submittal, lighting, there'll be four pole lights, 10 wall packs, all LED lights, DocSky compliant. Site access is an existing driveway off the cul-de-sac that was approved and vested under the original site plan, that's also a secondary access point to Granite Ridge Energy, that's their emergency access, it's a gated access point, the, we performed the sightline plan for that, and it does, one of the sightlines clips over in a budding property by a little bit, and we're being requested to seek an easement from the abutter, we don't believe we need to do that since it is a previously approved in, you know, operational driveway, we're making no modifications other than addition of a stop sign and a stop bar. We've been forward to the Conservation Commission, received their recommendation, been before the Heritage Commission, received their recommendation, architecture is gonna be a pre-engineered high bay metal building, low slope roof, door on the front by the office, man door on the back, and two loading docks, we provided a short-form traffic analysis, the numbers are showing 77 vehicle trips per day, weekday, 27 on the AM, and 30 vehicles per hour on the PM, but that's based on standard IET numbers, this here, the operation of the site, they anticipate one to two tractor trailer trips per month, and one to two 26, 28-foot box trucks per week, they'll have anywhere from, you know, two, maybe as high as six people on the site during shipping and receiving. With that, I can, there was kind of a lot there, we can go back to a couple of the, the items.
Let me, uh, let me start with staff, and then, um, to the Board, and I'm sure we've got a couple questions for you here, John?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, I'll go through the design review items, updated stormwater pipe summary table indicates three pipes at or exceeding the velocity of 10 feet per second, which does not comply with the regulations, we're requesting that they revise the design to be in compliance with the regs. Item number two, regarding permitting, the NHDES alteration of terrain permit, the FAA permit, and the London Dairy Sewer Discharge Permit, it indicates that it had been submitted on the checklist, as well as the Town of London Dairy stormwater permit is needed, the Agwen should submit for and obtain all project permits. Item three, submitted site plan and grading plan indicates a septic system and propose to serve the site that is contrary to the utility plan showing a sewer force main, which Jason explained where, where we're at with that. Under the existing conditions plan, we're requesting that they provide dimensions of the existing pavement with the, the access drive, provide the owner's signature, remove the building setback lines within the PSNH easement. Under item number five, the site layout, grading, and drainage utility plan and erosion control plans, we're requesting that they verify if the hydrant is need, if a hydrant is needed on site, and if the fire service location to the building is acceptable. Item B and C, we're requesting that they provide additional information related to the proposed stormwater features and their proximity to the wetlands, as well as the seasonal high water table on the site, we're requesting that they number, label and number the number of stories of the building, we're requesting that they label and, indicate and label the stormwater chamber inspection ports, indicate and label the limits of the pavement saw cut associated with the proposed sewer force main, also dimension the minimum cover of the sewer profile, requesting that they, or we're recommending that the erosion control measures be placed in the area of the proposed riprap apron, dimension the access drive to the stormwater basin on the plans, and providing additional information that the existing services are present or indicate where the utility services will be extended, that's for the electrical service, the underground electrical service. Lastly, submission indicates a utility clearance letter from Liberty Utilities, but the plans do not indicate any gas service to the site. Item six, our comments related to the construction details for clarification, item seven is, again, as Jason indicated, the need for site distance easement upon adjacent lot 44-45. Item eight, our comments as they relate to the project drainage report, and item number nine is, we're requesting that they verify the DRC comments from the Planning Department assessing fire, conservation, and sewer division. So, just to go back to what Jason had mentioned about the, the 98 approval, again, for the ecological industrial park, again, my understanding, this was before my time, and I think probably Art might be the only individual that still remains on the Board associated with that, so there were six lots up by, in the area of AES, back then it was Granite Ridge, and again, those lots, my, my understanding, again, there was six of them out there, they were all required to tie into the municipal sewer out there, my educated guess, because again, it was a number, there was some pretty significant wetlands out there, all the, there's four other lots that have been developed since I've been here, they've all tied into the municipal sewer, the building sizes range from 20,000 square feet all the way up to 75,000, 76,000 square feet, Bouderes, Limo, UTS, Bouderes, yeah, three of them that, that are out there, Limo, UTS, and Bouderes, again, like I say, Limo and UTS are about the same size and same type of use, the concern would be, in my opinion, the concern would be what happens in the future, right now, there's only one person that, that might be there. Jason's absolutely right, you know, without the system running and everything, goes anaerobic, but that's why you have all operation and maintenance, that's why you, you run the system, so, it'd be my opinion that, that I think it, that should be tied into the municipal sewer in accordance with the previously approved plan, that's all I have.
This, by recollection, is really, I mean, it being ecological park, or, you know, it was supposed to be, it would all tie, they had all tied into the sewer, and I know there's, there's, there's wet areas out there.
Yep.
Problematic, and I think that the desire of, of that to be, you know, I think... Problematic. And I think that the desire of, of that to be, uh, you know, I think ecologically prudent usage of the sewer was advised at that, that time.
And as, as the lots, and as the lots were developed, again, so Bouderes came in first. Bouderes tied into the, into the gravity sewer and he provided the five service lines to his driveway. Next guy that came in was Limo. Limo went back to that, took all four of those, brought it down to his site to provide service for, for UTS across the street and then this site. So it's, it's been followed and it's worked. So.
And that was the, the whole intent of it. It's actually, uh, the original design was, uh, of that eco park was Peter Loewit, when he was our town planner.
Yeah.
It was intended to be quite, quite thorough and, uh, at least environmentally, uh, positive.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Yeah, if I might offer something on that. It, it makes a lot of sense to tie into sewer if you've got a building, you know, just because you've got a twenty thousand square foot building, but you've got an occupancy of twenty, thirty people in it every day, you know, you get that continuous use, you get that flushing of the system, the movement in the system. This is going to be, think of it almost like cold storage and you might have two people on site for a week and then, you know, you could go for the next week. We're talking about ten gallons a day. If all six people were there every day, it's only sixty gallons a day. Um, it takes, you know, I forget what it was, two hundred and forty just to empty the two-inch force main based on the length. So, you know, that pipe, that pump's going to cycle four times. It, it makes sense when you have a population in the building, but when you don't have a population in the building, um, you know, at high, we're talking sixty gallons a day. The state requires us to do a minimum septic design. Any, any septic design needs to be a minimum of three hundred gallons a day. So even at that, the septic is going to be well oversized for, for the use. And I think it has a lot to do with the population and the use, uh, not necessarily the square footage of the building.
That's use current, current.
Currently, if they're going to have a change of use, they would need to come back for another site plan. And then at that time, you know, a change, uh, in population, change in additional parking, you know, addition modifications, uh, you know, that's when the town, you know, we've proven through this plan set, we can, we can get the sewer connection. It's just, i- i- in my opinion, it's, it's not a wise decision in this case based on the flow.
From the perspective, uh, especially back then was it's more ecologically acceptable.
Oh, absolutely. It makes a lot of sense to have sewer out there. I, I agree fully. It's just, you.
It's there.
Yeah, yeah. You've got to have, you've got to have the water to move through the system. That's all.
John, I get a question. Uh, fifty and forty-four Wentworth Ave. Are they serviced by sewer?
Yep. Fifty is Bouderes, forty-four is Limo.
Forty-four is Limo.
Correct.
Real estate holdings, Limo.
Looking at the plan behind you.
Yep.
This is Limo, this is Bouderes, that's UTS.
Okay. And they're all served by sewer?
Yes.
Is there, uh, um, so if you're on GIS and you open up the utilities, it looks like it stops on the, kind of the ninety-degree angle. Is there another one further down that's just not on here?
So what's shown on the, on the, the GIS is, uh, public sewer.
This is private.
Correct. So what it is.
Similar to Enterprise Drive.
Correct. So what it is, is there's a, there's a force main. The force main easement runs around here, then it ties into the sewer, uh, sanitary lot, uh, manhole that's up here.
Okay. Um, all right. I'm going to start with the board. Uh, anybody have any questions? Ann?
Yeah, I did question that originally. I'm glad you, you responded to, um, John's, I should say, Mr. Trotia's questions about the sewer versus the septic system. I have a question for you. What type of products would be warehoused there? I kind of had a, a question because of the name of the company, Textiles Coated International.
Yeah, they, they, they make different types of fabrics and fire retardant fabrics and, and, you know, um, in, fabrics used in industrial processes.
Would there be?
It's all, it's all undercover cold storage rolled product finished waiting for, for distribution, um, on orders.
Would there be any PFAS-related coated products?
I am not sure. I, I believe some of their product does, but that's all manufactured and then brought and stored in, you know, storage there.
Okay. Um, would the products, I, would the products be monitored by any chance since there may be any, some?
Yeah, they have their own, they have their own, their own systems in place there. This is, th- this building is also, because of their shipping methodology and, and the way they hold stuff, it's actually a secure site. Um, and.
Secure how?
Uh, secure in, uh, US Customs. Um, so it falls under, you know, US Customs for shipping and holding and shipping and receiving. So they have, they have their own protocols to follow for holding the materials, the finished products, uh, before they ship them out. So they have their internal.
Would you report it, be reporting or having any testing made at any point and reported to the state or any other?
I, I, I don't know. I might be able to.
Would you be able to elaborate a little more on the?
If you can just come, come up to the podium here or if you can sit down next to him where there's a microphone, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is John Tippett. I'm the CEO of TCI and I believe you had some questions regarding the materials that will be warehoused in the facility. We, um, they will be the same materials that we warehouse at our Sixth George Avenue location, which is over by the Manchester Airport. We make, uh, high-end plastic materials. Some of these materials are used to make medical grade products. They will be raw materials, uh, that are used to make fluoropolymers.
Yeah.
And for example, uh, those raw materials were used to make the plastic that was used to make the Moderna vaccine. So these are high purity plastics. We also have fiberglass as a, as a material that will be stored there as well. All these materials are known for being high purity, very non-flammable, very safe and have been stored in Lunedary for decades.
They have been stored in Lunedary at your other plant?
Yes.
Okay. I think I know where it is. Um, I was just curious because, um, when I did do the reading, it, it had mentioned the PFAS and I, sorry, I can't remember the, the whole name of the chemical chain or whatever that belongs to PFAS. Um, but, um, it was polyfluoro and it was like about thirty letters long. Um, but that's what I was concerned of. Uh, you can understand that because of what happened with St. Gobain across the river from, I'm not saying it bears any resemblance to your product, but I just wanted to make sure that, um, if, if it might have a chance of contamin-, be, any kind of contamination, that it be monitored on the site if appropriate. And I'm not who, sure who decides that. The state or, you know, federal government or anything like that if necessary. Because, um, I have no idea what your products may be used for. I don't know. You said firefighting equipment and things like that? Nope?
Uh, no, no.
Any kind of, you said coating?
Very non-flammable materials.
Okay.
So I, I can elaborate on that. The PFAS discussion is hundreds of thousands of chemicals.
Right.
The two really bad actors that is giving everybody a hard time is PFOA and PFOS.
Right.
Those are the two materials that are showing up in, uh, in water everywhere and in the human body. And so those materials are not present at our factory and our warehouse.
Okay.
Will not be present at this location. And we test everything we do to be non-detectable in parts per trillion, which is the best you can do for not having the worst PFAS actors that are out there. The, uh, the type of PFAS that we make actually ends up in the human body. It is, it is considered to be that safe.
It ends up in the human body?
There are some products that end up in the human body. They do not, uh, they do not bioaccumulate. They do not, they do not build up in the human body. And so, so as I mentioned, PFAS is hundreds of thousands of chemicals. The really bad ones are, are not on our facility.
Okay. Just because the town and the town next door, I used to live in, Litchfield, we've been going through the problems with our water here. So if, um, I, I totally, you know, understand what you're saying. So it sounds like to me that it would be, um, if there's any kind of interest by the state, they'd be moder-, monitoring it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering.
I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So has the Conservation weigh in on the septic system thing where this is a, supposed to be a protected zone?
I'll defer to Kelly.
No.
Not particularly on that.
No. That, that was not part of the conversation, wasn't part of the design when we were before the Conservation Commission. That as we developed the sewer, um, design, realizing, you know, the complication with the municipal sewer, we looked at, you know, whether or not we could get a gravity septic on site to combat that design challenge and, and that came into the design after.
So to be clear, when you presented to the Conservation Commission?
Was not part of the plan. They did not see it.
You told them that you were going to connect to the sewer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Jeff?
So, yeah, I just kind of want to hit on the, um, the septic versus con-, uh, connection to the, um, to the sewer topic. Can you walk me through how you, look, I'm five, how you came to that decision versus, uh, like some type of automation to, to simulate the flow for those, for those pipes?
Kelly, could you bring up, um, sheet thirteen of twenty-five? Oh, maybe then, uh, plan sheet, yeah. There we go. Then. Down, a little further down, right there. So as you can see on the left side of the screen is the, um, the pump. What it is, it's a self-contained unit, um, with a small grinder pump in it. Um, so if this was to be connected to the municipal sewer, it's literally, it, it's a plug and play package. You go out there and you drop it in, make the connection from the building in, you run the power to it. It's all self-contained. Then you have your, your PVC discharge pipe, which then we would need to extend out to Wentworth, to where a stub was provided for the sewer force main. So we know, um, based on the applicant's proposal about how many people maximum were anticipating on the site per day.
Right, right. No, I get that.
Yeah.
Obviously, if you had a hundred people in there, it'd be a non-issue.
Yeah.
What I'm asking is what did we, what have you looked at from?
So.
Automatically simulate was that flow?
Um, it, it, it is, it's nothing to do with the simulation of flow. It's simply just the calculation. And right on the side of that chart, we've got, you know, what I did is I went through the pump design calculation in there and the runtime. So that, that unit has a dose volume that's built into it. And we have a design flow that we're designing on. So we just calculate how many times, you know, that unit needs to dose, right? So, and then I calculated the volume of the two-inch force main, which is roughly one thousand four hundred, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty feet long, you know, and we're looking at a volume of water in the pipe, or wastewater in the pipe, two hundred and thirty-six, I can't read it here, two thirty-six, two thirty-eight gallons. So it's just, it's simple math at that point, based on the population, sixty gallons a day, that thing needs to dose four times. So the question just comes in, and this is where engine, engineer and judgment just comes in. You're going to have the, the facility in use and it's not going to be, not necessarily going to have people there every week, right? Because the, the amount of shipments that's coming in and out. So how long is it going to sit in that pump chamber and wait? And then, once it triggers and it goes, it needs to cycle an additional three times before that first dose actually gets to the gravity manhole. So is that going to be two weeks or is it going to be a month and a half?
So you're saying there's no, uh, there's no engineering way to, to do this automatically?
Uh, it's, it's.
It is automatic. It is.
The, the, yeah.
It's just, it's just.
The dosing is the automatic part of.
Yeah. That's the, so.
So, yeah.
The longer, the longer that sits in, you know, still, right? The settle solid, settle out.
Yeah. How, how, how do you, how do you?
How do you flush it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you get to jet it. Or, you know, you, when you flush, just make sure your flush is two hundred and forty gallons, right? That's, um, you know, in, in.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm trying, I'm trying to get at is, is there, is there a techno, technical solution to, to?
The, the technical solution is let's use gravity in this small flow circumstance where we're sixty gallons a day and we're required by the state to have a three hundred gallon a day septic. And then should there be a change in the future, an application for a change of use, reassess based on the population at that point and then connect it to the sewer. We've proven, the, the, the infrastructure is almost all the way to the property now. It's there. Um, we just got to connect to it. Um, it's just, I, I would love to say, yeah, it's a great idea. Let's just do it. And I, I guess I could do that, but that wouldn't be serving my client well because it's gonna, it's gonna lead to maintenance and, uh, maintenance issues and, and plug pipe, you know?
Sell tanks.
Yeah, you.
They sell, hold on. Sell tanks for this reason, to regurgitate water through your system, to keep your, keep your system going. We're in the northeast snow zone, zone A5. We won't see the temperatures for anaerobic, like you said, as much as you think. Sixty-five degree on average and above will give you anaerobic. We know that, right? So you're in aerobic conversations, only two months out of the year. So they do sell a type, they sell tanks that you can install, just like any plumbing device that will run water through your system periodically to continually flush that out in a condensed pipe where it's going to never see the groundwater because it's in a sewer pipe, whereas a septic system at any point does leak out, right? That's why they didn't want it there.
Or, or, or you just build it as it's designed here and instead of paying for all that infrastructure, you just pay to have it jetted every month or two months or whatever to, to clean out the pipes basically, right? That, that would be the same thing, right?
So you're saying either add infrastructure or?
Or maintenance.
Yeah, it's like industrial makeup.
We know it's going to clog up. We know it's going to clog up. We know that for a fact. It's like that, it's like that and the other site that was mentioned and, and every, seems like every six months or so, they get rotor, a router in there, spinning the pipes, you know, in, inside the pipes to clean them out because they, they have no flow. They don't, they don't have any flow. Um, now, can I continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so people are going to say, people are going to say that you want to do a septic system because it's cheaper. That's what they're going to, that's what they're going to say. Is that true or not?
Probably not.
So, so the financial part is off the table. For you, it's, it's really just a?
It, it's a function. It's a function of the system, maintenance.
Function or non-function?
In a, an unmin, unmined building, you know, let it, let it flow gravity. Gravity doesn't break. Gravity doesn't need maintenance. You know, you'll have your, you'll have your, you know, periodic, uh, pump, you know, pumping of the septic tank, you know, and if, if they had plans to grow and guaranteed, you know, and the site was able to put on other additional buildings in, in, you know, short order, next couple of years, I mean, it would probably make sense to take on extra maintenance.
So as a board...
But the site's maxed out.
So as a board, we're cross between, we have no information for conservation, because when you presented to them, you said it was, it was going to be, we're an ecological site, and we've got to make a judgment, what's the best for the ecology of the area as compared to putting in a system that's going to fail?
300 gallons a day, 60 gallons, yeah.
That's the decision that we have in front of us.
Yes.
On this side of the table, so...
You know, I think ultimately, obviously, this is a volume issue, you just don't have enough material going through here to cleanse it, for lack of a better terms, correct? And it sounds to me as though you're recognizing that if you do put, if you do put a sewer in, there's going to be a degree of maintenance to it, you know? I cannot, I understand, there's not going to be many people there, there's that and the other thing, I understand, okay, we go for a change of use, now we're looking at it again, because the building's changing, so on and so forth. You know, but you don't need it, I feel as though you probably don't need a change of use to all of a sudden have 30 people there every day. You know, I think it would be...
Have a party, party.
Yeah.
Come flush it.
I mean, I feel as though it's appropriate to, to put the system in place like its neighbors and everything else that's there that connects to the sewer, recognizing that, yeah, there's going to be a little more maintenance on your end, but long-term, it's going to be safer for the town and safer for you. Before I keep going, does the board have anything?
Another question. It's time for Kelly or for John. So, you know, yesterday, applicant two, you're doing manufacturing up on George Avenue?
We are, yes. We have 200, 200 employees in Londonderry on George Ave.
So let's say next year, you get a wonderful contract, you want to expand, or you need to expand a little bit, you want to move a manufacturing line up to this warehouse, what point in time does that trigger a change of use? Application coming through the planning department?
So first step at a minimum, they're starting with building and some type of permit, and then from there, we would be able to assess the scope of work that they're doing and make a determination as to whether that can be handled administratively, or needs to come to the planning board for a full site plan or site plan amendment, most likely.
How much of your George Avenue is dedicated to warehousing today versus manufacturing?
Yeah, that's, I was going to address that, and I like the way you think with the thought of more business coming out, thank you.
Absolutely.
The, we are maxed out at 6 George Ave, and so we anticipate that we will need probably 15,000 square feet of storage space at this building. We are looking to put in new equipment, new manufacturing jobs, we need to grow, and that's why we have to get this warehouse. Originally, when we bought this space, we thought it was going to be much bigger, we had hoped for much bigger, so it's going to be maxed out almost from day one, there will be no room for manufacturing in that building, it's strictly going to be warehouse.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board before I go to the public?
You know, I think it's, thank you, Mr. Chair, I think it's too bad, because in other municipalities that I've dealt with, particularly in the North Country, where they have a lot of buildings that no one's ever in, they have holding tanks for specifically this reason, because no matter what system you design, it's going to fail. And so, and you have slope issues and non-gravity, and it's, everything's a mess up there. But in Londonderry, we don't allow holding tanks, because people don't pump them out. They just don't, and they overflow, and it causes a whole other ecological issue. So you can't do that in Londonderry. But it's too bad, because this would be a perfect place for it. And you just pump it every month, every two months, or whatever happens to be, and that's your maintenance item. But can't do it, but for people who are thinking and watching on TV and saying, oh, I just put a holding tank in, can't do that, our regulations don't allow it. Thank you.
Another question for staff, so let's say we theoretically approve the use of a septic tank versus the sewer hookup, and, you know, it's just, I lost my train of thought, so go ahead. Sorry.
All right. With that, I will, this is a public hearing, I'll open it up to public comment, if you have anything, come on up.
Don't come back tonight.
That was weird. Okay, thank you. Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. I just want to remind you all that when PFOAs first came out, everybody thought they were harmless, it was not a big deal. And then we found out the damage that they do. So we should be super careful about this. I mean, right now, the government and the EPA is saying, oh, yeah, these are harmless, like you just said, but in the future, we don't know, with better testing, we find out more and more things as we go along. So be very cautious of this. And I know that this is going to sound silly, but all the time, I hear people say, it's better to build it now than have to pay more for it later, and that's how I feel about this sewer. You might as well connect to it now, because it's going to be cheaper, because construction goods are cheaper now than they will be 10 years from now. So I do agree with you, Jake, you don't know if they're going to add 30 people, even if it's for a month, you don't, we don't know. It's not, they're not changing the use, they just have more people there. So that's an issue for me. The other thing that I think, I know we can't make these people do this, but I would encourage the planning board to think about it, to have a, an environmental baseline study of everything around there, and maybe have it again in five years to make sure that there are no leakings or contaminants because of the wetlands that are there. And I also would say that this should hold off another meeting until these guys go in front of the conservation with this plan to hear what conservation has to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can you try and get that on the podium, just so they're not in your face? Thank you.
I like standing. Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I'm assuming that there's going to be a sprinkler system in this, correct? Okay. Because my concern is, you have all these plastics in there, well, they may be very non-flammable, but if you have a building that gets on fire, they're going to melt. And then what happens to the environment? But that being said, I'm bringing in another whole point. I know they got permission from Field and whatever, okay? And I know they went before the conservation, but one of the things that was not brought up at the Conservation Committee, my understanding is, the rabbits that they're talking about is the only surviving colony of New England cottontail rabbits in Londonderry. And New Hampshire Fish and Game doesn't live in Londonderry. The rabbits typically do not survive well if relocated, as they struggle to find food, shelter, and avoid predators in a new environment. It's often more humane to leave them in their original habitat rather than removing them to an unfamiliar. Rabbits are adapted to the specific environment, relocating them can expose them to unfamiliar predators and food sources. If a mother rabbit is relocated, she may abandon her young, leading to starvation or predation. This is the only surviving colony in Londonderry of New England cottontails, and that was not brought up to the conservation. Thank you.
Anything else from the public?
Ray Brezlin, 3 Gary Drive. I'm somewhat familiar with this area. I believe it, I believe, it was kind of a quick put-up there with the map, and my eyesight's not that good, but I believe it is close to AES Power Plant. I think there is, what they're referring to, a cul-de-sac up there, I think is almost the back entrance to the power plant. And I'm somewhat familiar with the area, because in the past, I've walked up there. And I think when the power plant was put in, and some other things were put in up there, there was concern about stormwater runoff. And if you go down from the cul-de-sac to the woods, there was actually storm drains down in the woods, which is, and there's berms down there to, to keep the stormwater from running off or slow it down before it goes into the wetland. And there were actually, if you go down further, there were actually small little brooks that go down through there. So that is of concern with any development business, and what some folks, including Anne brought up about concern about what's in the buildings, what's being stored in the buildings, and so forth, I think we should look at that closely and be concerned about that. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anything else from the public?
Dan Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive. Jake, I'd just like to know if you could ask the applicant if they've looked into the tank, like Stephen said, all right? If they've looked into that, because he's saying there is a tank that you can utilize for something like that. Be nice to know if they did.
Anything else from the public? All right, coming back to the board, I do want to hit on the tank question. You were saying tanks aren't allowed, he's talking about it, you're talking specifically just a holding tank.
Yeah, it go, everything, you flush the toilet, it goes in the holding tank, it goes nowhere, there's no outlets, it's just a storage tank, holding tank, and then you have it pumped out periodically.
Strictly storage.
Most of them have alarms on them, the alarm goes off, you know, it's time to pump it out. The problem was, back in the days when they were being used, people didn't do it, they disconnected the alarms, it was off of property, so they didn't care about it, and it just kept overflowing, and it turned into a mess, and so Londonderry did not allow them anyway.
John, your thoughts on...
It's different than what our water experts...
Yeah, yeah. John, your thoughts on what was discussed earlier?
As far as a holding tank, that doesn't work. Like Tony says, it's not permitted. Again, what Stephen said, that's, that there is that technology to move it along.
I think, I'll look for a little input from the board here, but I, I think I'm looking for a continuance on this, to allow the applicant to work with the town, to get the necessary equipment and whatnot in place for connecting to the sewer there. You look like you might have a question.
I remembered what I was going to say. So, so we have a site or a subdivision plan today that requires sewer connections for all the properties down there. Do we have to do anything with that if we theoretically approve them going to the septic system instead of hooking up?
Question for the planning...
You need to make clear that you're not requiring that for this plan.
But this subdivision plan itself doesn't have to be updated or anything like that?
No, because you may have a future one come back to you and say, have the same request.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And just on what you're going to be storing up there, is it raw materials, finished goods, combination of both?
Mainly raw materials, I believe.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I don't know, Mr. Chair, why you, what the purpose would be for the continuance. Either, either we're in favor of a septic system, or we're going to make them hook it up. How they have to hook it up is up to them. So, our decision is yes on a septic system or no, I guess.
I mean...
Agree.
I would agree.
So your current conditions that are outlined, the points that John covered, indicate that they should connect.
That's fair.
Correct.
So that...
John, do you feel like you have enough data to be able to work with these guys after an approval to get a connection?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Jason has the information.
That I'm fine.
We're at end of...
With that, I'm fine. Let's work on the conditional use permit. I am looking for a motion to grant conditional approval, excuse me, motion to grant approval of a conditional use permit for approximately 6,874 square feet of wetland buffer impacts for the construction of 24,000-square-foot warehouse building, along with associated site improvements.
So, Mr. Chair?
I have a motion from Mr. Rug. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a second from Lynn, all in favor, starting with Anne, please.
Excuse me. Anne Champ, Anne Champ, aye.
John Cruz, aye. Good Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Joe Penta, aye.
Jason, aye, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative, the conditional use permit has been granted. I am looking for, we do need to make them, someone going to the ballet?
Arthur, is that you?
Yes.
I knew you were going to be that guy.
The connection is failed because it comes through the hearing aids.
Want to borrow mine?
I've been making this a different plan.
All right.
Why not?
Don't worry about it.
So I am looking for someone to make a motion here for conditional approval. John, do you need us to note that we would be expecting it to be hooked up to sewer? That's inside of your recommendation, though, correct? So if we grant conditional approval based off your recommendation, that's what's happening.
I think it would make it just clearer that you're granting conditional approval, and it's to be tied to municipal sewer, period. That way, there's no question.
That's fair, that's fair. I saw your hand up a couple of times.
Just the one other item was the, in the comments, was to obtain an easement for the site distance over the abutter's property. And I guess just our point is that was an approved, previously approved vested site plan, the driveway was constructed to try to seek easement from an abutter on something that's existing. We would like that.
What's the board's item?
My question is whether or not there's an easement that exists. Have you, have you looked into that, Jason? Have you looked into, is there an easement that actually exists today?
I, I don't know.
There you go.
I don't know.
So you want to know if the easement exists?
And then if not, they need to establish one. That's how it's, that's how the condition is raised.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's there, it's not a problem, but we don't want to try to be held to a point where we need to purchase an easement from an abutter for an existing condition. Previously approved through two other site plans, and one of those site plans being a vested site plan.
So is yours shown incorrectly? So is your site distance shown incorrectly?
No. It's the existing condition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not clear, no, I just, I just confused myself. I'm not clear where the easement is, what the easement is, what the easement does.
Kelly, could you go to sheet, Plan Sheet 11?
Are we saying that you do not currently have the sightline distance, is that what we're taking the assumption on? And that we want you to obtain an easement because you don't have the sightline distance? That's what the town's requesting?
Yes.
Yes.
You folks are saying it's an existing condition.
Right. So as you see here, Jake, that line goes over the property line, outside of the right-of-way. See that line?
Yeah.
Right? So it goes outside of the right-of-way. So in order to prevent somebody from putting something within that sight distance, they get an easement. Grants them the ability to go there and remove vegetation or whatever would be there.
What could be put there?
Vegetation, probably landscaping.
Or just overgrowth.
Or just over, correct.
We don't, we don't have any of that around town.
No. So again...
We have tree water.
That's right. I have his badge, actually, right here.
So my question is, does one actually exist? If Jason is saying it's been approved already and it's built, so maybe there is an existing easement out there, so they might, they need to do some... So they might, they need to do some research. Does that exist, does that easement exist?
Be happy to do the research to see if it exists. It's just, if it doesn't exist, that just brings in another issue for the applicant.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's fair to understand if there's an easement there or not.
Certainly can take a look at that.
From a, there's already vegetation there. So from a biological standpoint, I don't see why it needs to, yes, I think we should know if there's an easement. No, I don't think we should make them go get an easement. Is that fair?
One unrelated question too. Is your business at all regulated or licensed by New Hampshire DES?
Yes. It is. We, we have, we have an incinerator and, and so that is monitored and, and so that, that gets tested annually. And so that is the one piece of equipment that is.
Thank you.
All right. I might need a little help with this one, but let me work through it. I am looking for a motion to grant conditional approval of a site plan to construct a 24,000 square foot warehouse, along with associated site improvements located at 42 Wentworth Avenue, map 14 lot 44-36, Zoned Industrial 2 and Agricultural Residential 1, Yelso LLC, also known as Textiles Coated International. And Stephen W. Tippett, Tippett is the applicant, last revised September 11th, 2025, with the precedent conditions to be filled within 120 days of approval and prior to plan signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the engineering memo. And that the applicant does the research to see if there's an existing easement with regards to the site distance on the kind of corner of the cul-de-sac here, and that the applicant is to hook up to municipal sewer.
I think we, you should add that if, if, if the easement is there, it should be recorded under, under the plan.
That's fair. And we'll add in that if the easement is there, it should be recorded into the plan. If the easement is not there, we are not looking for the applicant to get an easement.
If, if it's not there, you're going to have a midnight weed whacker.
Can I just clarify that?
Yeah, Kelly, please.
So item seven on the engineering comments would not, no longer be?
You talk in design review items?
Thank you, yes. I would recommend eliminating that item and replacing it with what you just said because it, they're conflicting.
I agree with you. So we'll be eliminating item number seven. We recommend the applicant update the driveway site distance Plan Sheet 11 to label the necessary clearing for the sightline and obtain an easement for the indicated sightline upon lot 44-45 as acceptable to the Department of Engineering and Environmental Services would be replaced with a recommendation that the applicant does the research to figure out if there is an easement for site distance on lot 44-45. And if there is, it be recorded. If there is no sight distance.
On the plan.
On the plan.
Recorded on the plan.
Recorded on the plan, thank you. If there is no sight distance easement, the, the tunnel in an area would not be requested. Asking the applicant to request one. Kelly, were you good with the sewer side of things?
Is that the one you have there?
No.
No, they're all.
He's just going to tie to municipal sewer, period.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I'm not missing something. Yeah, pause it.
Good. All right. So there's a motion.
Can you clarify that we are going to be, is the motion is going to require tying into the sewer or a septic system?
The motion would, granting this would require them to tie into sewer.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm looking for a motion. And please feel free to say so moved.
So moved.
I have a motion, motion, I have a motion from Jeff. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second for Jason. All in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
John Cruz, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Jason, aye, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the discussion on sewer.
Not a problem. Thank you for listening. All right, up next, I have a public hearing. I'm going to switch these two up. I want to do D first and then C. I have a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a conditional use permit to permit multifamily use in the C3 district at Tulich Field Road, map 12 lot 68, zoned C3 and Historic Overlay District, CC Properties LLC is the owner and applicant.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt you for a minute to announce the fact that Sergeant Cruz has left the podium?
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, come on up, folks. Let me just get my stuff turned around here. Miss Gandia, good evening.
How are you?
John or Kelly, do you want to start or do you want to go straight to the applicant?
Well, Kelly, start.
I think this is fairly straightforward, but in my memo, you'll see that I noted or acknowledged that you should be reviewing this based on, as things stand today, that being specifically with respect to the zoning. Obviously, the next agenda item is regarding rezoning of this parcel. However, the parcel is currently zoned commercial three with the historic historic overlay, and that is how the board should be reviewing this request with respect to the conditional use permit. The memo before you and the presentation materials provided reflect that as well. And I can answer any questions you have now, or you can?
Let's send it over to the applicant. We'll let them give us a little overview here. I'll bring it to the board, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have a couple of questions that we can all work through here. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Laura Gandia. I'm attorney with Divine Millamette in Manchester, and I'm here on behalf of the owner and applicant, CC Properties LLC. Here with me is Richard Flyer, one of the managing partners of that LLC. So as this board is aware, Tulich Field Road, map 12 lot 68, it has a unique history, and some of this is tied into the rezoning application. But basically, in 2006, the town council voted to rezone this property from AR1 to C3 and put a historic overlay district on it. Also, at that time, as part of the rezoning in 2006, a historic preservation easement deed was put on that. Lots have changed since that time. The historic preservation easement deed is in the process of being removed. We did have a town council meeting, and I reached out to the New Hampshire Division of Charitable Trust and went over the terms of the easement and how it was created, and they agreed that they saw no charitable intent in that. So the town worked cooperatively with myself and the owner to draft a termination agreement, and that has been signed and should be recorded any day now. Since that happened, also, we filed a motion for demolition for the barn. That was granted as well. So what technically remains, and the barn is still there, is the house. So this property, again, is zoned C3. What my client would like to do is to have a multifamily use. The application called for five multifamily units. He has had more discussions with his team that will be helping him develop this property. And there's also a discussion about having three, I mean, two triplexes, which would increase it to six. So we do want to amend our request from five units to six. So the conditional use permit, as this board is aware, is part of the innovative land use control, which allows the planning board, in theory, to act as the zoning board to grant a conditional use permit for use, provided the criteria in the town zoning is met. And you have that in my September 24th letter to the board. There's the general criteria, which is section 6.2. So there is one, two, three, four, five, six criteria that we have to demonstrate to the board that we can meet. And those criteria, I'll go through those with you now. The granting of the application would meet some public need or convenience. We put in our application material that the granting of the conditional use permit would address the housing shortage throughout the state, as well as offering an alternative style of living for the community. The granting of the application offers a tangible benefit by fostering, fostering compatible land uses while promoting smart and orderly growth and development. And I know the town has been working on their master plan. I know there's a July 2025 document that is on the town's website or on the internet, and that master plan document speaks of providing housing alternatives, and this would do that for the town. The second criteria is, I'm just going to go back to this, is the granting of the application is in the public interest. And again, this kind of coincides with criteria A. The granting of the application would not alter the character of the neighborhood, nor would it affect the health, safety, and welfare of the general community. The property has been used as office and residential. A majority of the nearby properties contain some sort of multifamily use, and I did put significant documentation to my application that shows the nearby properties. So majority of the nearby properties are two families, condominiums, duplexes, a manufactured mobile home park. So the use is consistent with the others' properties in the area, and it is part of the public interest to provide affordable housing to the residents. The property in question is reasonably suited for the requested development. The property has frontage on two roads, which is Litchfield Road and Mammoth Road, and can accommodate the proposed use with available water and sewer. The property, again, has been used both commercially and residentially in the past and has hosted various functions and gatherings without issue. Allowing a multifamily use in an area where such uses exist or otherwise compatible is reasonable. The fourth criteria, D, is the use would not have a substantial adverse effect on the rights of owners of surrounding properties. And again, this, if you look at the surrounding properties, and I'm just going to go through some of my attachments, I did put for property one, and I outlined all of the different properties that are in the area. So 435 Mammoth Road is St. Jude's Church. 422 Mammoth Road is Lundon Dairy Country Club. That's the owner there. That's a 0.2 acre property. That's vacant, but that is oddly enough owned by Lundon Dairy Country Club. 2 Stonehenge Road is a 6.9 acre property. That's owned by Wagon Wheels Mobile Home Park. 6 McGregor Cut, just a little bit further down the road, is the residences at McGregor Cut. 409 Mammoth Road is Pleasant View Cemetery. 1 Litchfield Road is a duplex. 4 Litchfield Road is, it's a multi-conversion. It's two units. 6 Litchfield Road is condos, two condo units. 427 Mammoth Road is a single-family residential. And it's my understanding that 7 Litchfield Road is proposed for a multifamily site development as well. So given, if you look at the surrounding area, it is not going to have any type of adverse effects on the rights of the surrounding property. They are all like in kind. In fact, there's actually a concrete, industrial concrete use that is located kind of across and through the intersection as well. So the next criteria.
Excuse me. Did you mean to say commercial?
Yeah, sorry. Concrete commercial. Sorry. Thank you. The next one is the E, the traffic generated by the proposed use is consistent with the identified function, capacity, and level of service of transportation facilities serving the community. I did pull the 7 Litchfield Road traffic study, and the one that was done, I don't know if the board remembers, back in 2017, Joe DeCarolis owned 7 Litchfield Road, and he was going to put in elderly housing or multifamily that I think was probably close to 40, maybe 50 units. And I do have his traffic report. If the board wants to see it, that I review that. And at that point in time, there was no impacts to, or required changes to the roadway systems based on that, like 40 to 50-plus units. Now 7 Litchfield Road has been reduced significantly. I think it may be somewhere under 20. And even with that, there's no impact to the surrounding roadways or traffic concerns based on that traffic impact study. So we don't see any level of service for transportation facilities in the worded facilities. There's none there. There's none existing. There are none proposed. Criteria F, there must be appropriate provisions for access facilities adequate for the estimated traffic from public streets and sidewalks so as to assure public safety and avoid traffic congestion. Again, we don't opt proposing any access facilities. There are none proposed in the area. There've never had been. So we technically think that is not applicable to our project. But even with that, the proposed use is not anticipated to need any access facilities as the estimated traffic will be in line with what is currently existing, and the proposed use is negligible. And I did review with you, and I do have in my packet all the surrounding properties. So given the unique location of the property, along with the existing compatible land uses and the low impact of the proposed multifamily use, the applicant believes it successfully satisfied the criteria for the granting of the conditional use permit, and respectfully requests that the plaintiff board consider granting its request.
All right. I'm going to start with John and Kelly. Do you have anything?
Just a couple of things. Again, this, the sewer is on Litchfield Road, but it does not go to the front, to the frontage of that lot. So there will be some, some finagling. See it, see where the, the green line is. So it's actually down on Litchfield Road, so it doesn't have frontage right on it. As far as the traffic, my, my opinion, again, DeCarolis had come in with that, of the development on, at 7 Litchfield Road. That was set in 2017. It was a long time ago. Again, traffic has grown. We all know it. The, the location of that driveway from the existing driveway at the intersection with Stonehenge, Litchfield, and Mammoth should be looked at pretty closely. The queuing of that, that traffic at that red light, that signalized intersection, I've seen it go pretty far back there. That's all I have.
Kelly.
So, again, just from a procedural standpoint, the board should be evaluating this proposal, which is a conditional use permit, based on the current status of the property, that being that it is zoned commercial three with the historic district overlay. In per our zoning ordinance, by way of conditional use permit, multifamily use may be sought. If the conditional use permit is granted, a site plan will then be required, at which time we can go through the details of traffic mitigation, drainage, all of your, all the things we just saw in the application prior. So that is how I recommend this board review this application. There's six criteria for conditional use permit that you just heard. That's what you, you should be using to evaluate this.
Yeah. And, and, and so, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I was gonna, I was gonna jump on that. Thank you, Kelly. I agree 100%. That was a, that was a great presentation, counsel, but I don't think it's germane to what our task is today. To me, this is, this is yet again, another attempt for the town, for a land use board in Lundon Dairy to unravel the spot zoning that was done in Lundon Dairy for decades, where for whatever reason, the people in power at the time said, okay, well, that can be this, and that can be that. And so you had a whole bunch of mixed uses all, all over town. This is one of those sites where, where if we remove the C3 and put it to AR1, it's similar, and you don't have spot zoning anymore on that site. So to me, that's what this is all about. Everything else is a later date, driveways, and what's going to go on there, and a tent city, whatever. That's really not what we're doing tonight. One person's opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else from the board?
So I, I'd like to say a couple of things. Number one, I go 27, 100%, but also going to the comment about the traffic study in 2017. That intersection was very different in 2017. The volume of traffic going through there today is significantly higher than it was in 2017. And I would want to see a traffic study or something. It's a state road. It's a corner of a state road, corner of a town road. I'd like to see something from the state saying they're good with adding in additional capacity there. I think the access today goes over the left turn lane on Southbound Mammoth Road, so it's, it's not even a, an ideal driveway as it stands today, so. That's where I'm at.
I think it's a very good point, Lynn. I mean, this was a spot zoning at, at the time, and the planning board did not approve it, town council did at that time.
Mr. Chair, do you entertain a motion?
Um. I, I- I still have public comment that I have to vote for, Mr. Rug. John, I got a question. It's 1.38 acres. What are the setbacks on, what would the setback requirements be for this, and I feel like there's hardly a buildable footprint for a home there, never mind-
It's a corner lot.
A multifamily use, yeah.
You're gonna have 50-foot setback on Litchfield as well as Mammoth Road? Because they're both, those are both frontage, those are the-
Oh, you got that.
Or front yard.
So, you're 50 feet on Litchfield, you're 50 feet on Mammoth Road?
Correct, then 15, my recollection, Kelly, correct me, right, 15 on the other two lines.
50 feet. 50 feet.
So, okay.
So, I mean, ultimately, this is a-
Hold on a second, you're talking, you're not talking right away. So, it's 60 feet from the front, and 30 from the side and rear, for built, for structures?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at, okay, we want to put a multifamily unit here. What are the setbacks that would, that would be required to meet that, and, you know, I guess I'll, I think this might be too far along in the process, what I'm talking about. It's kind of a moot point anyway, so I'm gonna stop.
We're getting into site plan?
Correct.
I would say?
So, my biggest concern, you know, obviously, the board here has discussed it, John's discussed it, you know, the existing traffic study for the lot next door, 2017, is a long time ago, given, given what we have today, or given what the traffic is today. Can we, could we do a traffic study for a CUP? Could we require that? No, right?
Wouldn't recommend it, I think this is more of a 60,000-foot view at this stage, and then as you move into the site plan, because a lot of factors can change, you've already heard that-
Yeah.
The number of units may or may not change, which, that can happen-
Yeah.
Regardless of what they put on the CUP application, multifamily is the use, multifamily is 3+.
Correct.
So.
Okay, fair.
They'll be, they'll be back.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah, I get that.
There's a lot of work to do before-
I get that. Before I go to the public, anything else from the board? Sorry, Mr. Rug?
Jake.
All right.
Jake.
Anne.
Are you planning on taking down the original house that's on the property?
Are you planning on taking down the original house on the property?
Are you planning on taking down-
Yes.
You're planning on taking the historic building down?
I said, "yes", it's not historic.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
It's from the 1800s.
All right.
Can I just respond to some of the comments?
Sure.
Thank you for all those comments, and we've considered them all, and there is a 2022, I believe, traffic study for 7 Litchfield Road that I reviewed, and again, their count's lower, but it's more up to date, and I do realize that 2017 is older, but that was like 60-plus, I believe, or somewhere around there, but the 2022 is low, and that's still showing no negative impact with that development, so that-
Went from like 45 to 15 or 20, right?
Exactly, so, so that's out there, and the thing about the spot zoning and that mess, and I agree 100% with that mess, but that, we didn't own the property at that time, so we're here with that mess, and part of the relief that's available to us is to come in front of the board for a conditional use permit, that's one of the processes that's available for us, and this is just a minute issue, it's just the use, all the other issues that we talked about will be addressed for site plan, and we're very aware that we have to do that, including traffic.
Thank you. All right, I will open it up to the public, does the public have any comment?
Daniel Bush out of O'Connell Drive.
Talk to the council about getting a third microphone.
What's that?
Talk to the council about getting a third microphone.
Not in the budget, I don't think. I travel that road constantly. I think putting multifamily in that area is just asking for more accidents. I listened to a presentation, 2017 traffic study, that was a long time ago, Lundendary Country Club, all they have over there is a sign, that's it. The sewer line is not in front of the property, it is in a historic district. I'm doing work right now at St. Jude's Church on that parking lot, and that, when people are trying to get out of there, it's, it's a nightmare with the traffic. I can just imagine getting Litchfield and Mammoth closer, where you're right in that intersection, trying to get out of there. I don't think this is a good thing for the town, thank you.
Anything else from the public?
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley. Okay, I'm gonna see if I understand the history of this, I've been trying to follow it. It originally was an AR1, and then it was turned to a C3 to allow a business in that existing building, correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so when C-
One sec, Kelly, hold on, Kelly?
I just want to make sure we're keeping to, I'm not gonna try and guess the intent as to why things were done the way they were, but yes, AR1 and then C3.
Okay, so when CC Properties bought it, it was a C3? And it had historical-
Historic district.
Historic district things that had to be, this had to be maintained, this had to be maintained in order to own it, is that's correct? And then, the next thing I remember is that CC Properties came because the barn was unsafe and needed to be coming down, because it was a safety hazard, needed to come down, and they granted that, but the barn's still standing inside of, in spite of 50 mile an hour winds that we've been having. Then, it's my understanding that CC Properties came and asked to have the restrictions, the historical restrictions, removed, correct? Okay. At that time, I thought that the restrictions were being removed under the condition that they made it an AR1. No?
Not a condition, it was a separate motion-
It was a separate motion?
Manager to take the steps necessary to rezone the property.
Okay, so, so that's in limbo, so that could still happen? It could, the town manager could, just explain that to me one more time.
That's why, that's why we're here.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Kelly.
So, right now, we're talking about the conditional use permit application for the property.
I know.
Our next item on the agenda is the rezoning of the property. That item is what you're asking about, which is the directive from the town council to rezone the property to AR1.
Okay, so the town council wanted to lift the restriction, but they wanted it rezoned to AR1?
Correct.
Correct. And if it's rezoned to AR1, you cannot put multifamily use there, correct? Okay, so let's do the other one. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the history, because we have two historical old things on there that have, were supposed to stay that way, and now they're all going away, so, okay, thank you.
Anything else from the public? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
Can I just respond to those two comments?
Briefly, very briefly.
Very briefly, professional office, professional uses are allowed, which could have probably more traffic flow, and the two motions at the town council meeting were not interrelated or intertwined or dependent on each other.
Could you repeat that? Sorry, I, you're talking a little too fast for me.
I know, so, professional office and other C3 uses are allowed as a matter of right that would generate significantly more traffic than the proposed use on the table, and at the town council meeting that just happened, the petition to rezone and the motion to remove the historic overlay, the historic easement, were two separate independent motions, and were not tied or interdependent on each other.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the board before we get a motion here? All right, I am looking for a motion to grant approval of a conditional use permit to permit multifamily use in the C3 district at 2 Litchfield Road, map 12, lot 68, Zone C3, and Historic Overlay District, CC Properties LLC is the owner and applicant with the following conditions: that a full site plan application is required to address engineering, design, utilities, parking, access, drainage, landscaping, and other applicable details.
So, move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion for Mr. Rug, do I have a second?
Second there, Mr. Chair.
Second for Mr. Wiles, all in favor, starting with Anne, please.
Anne Champa, nay.
Lynn Wiles, nay.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jeff Panta, nay.
Jason Nite, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the negative, this has not been granted.
Can you cite specifically why you're denying it, please?
Yeah, that, I don't feel as though-
We'll need it in writing and clear.
What's that?
We need it in writing and clear for the record.
Can I just email it to you, then?
This is sufficient, I'm just, I'm making it clear, we need it very clear.
All right, you know, for one, I'm concerned about really the traffic impact, I think they have the ability to meet everything else with the exception of, they kind of intertwine, but traffic impact and, more access and safety than traffic and impact. And I would need, those of us that said no, I would need you to agree with that or add to it.
I would recommend you each make really clear why you're-
That's fair.
Voting the way you are.
That's fair.
Email tomorrow's satisfactory?
That's fine, but it should be in the record as well.
So, I'm going to say, on the staff memo, under the summary of required findings, there are six bullets talking about needing the conditional use permit needs to meet, and I do not think the applicant has demonstrated that we meet the last two bullets of the six regarding traffic impacts are accessible, acceptable, and consistent with roadway capacity, and there is safe access for vehicles and pedestrians.
I would have to concur with that, and I believe Jeff, were you the other one?
Anne as well.
Anne is, Anne?
I do saw, especially with the bad accident this week, at that intersection.
And Jeff?
I concur with the traffic.
Okay.
And let me just, if you did it more clearer, let me pull up the text, that's fine, let's just move on.
Okay. All right, I am looking to, well, we're moving on here, we have a public hearing on-
Can you just recap the total motion for me?
Yeah, so we had, eh, I had it written down here for a second. We had 4, 2, 3, 4 nay, 3 yes, Anne was a nay, Lynn was a nay, Arthur was a yea, I was a nay, Jeff was a nay, Jason was a yea, and Sean was a yea.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, I just got my stuff all turned around here, hold on. That's done. All right, I am looking for a public hearing on a rezoning request to rezone 2 Litchfield Road, map 12, lot 68, from C3, and historical district overlay to AR1, CC Properties LLC is the owner. Who wants to go, Kelly, you going through the existing conditions here? You know, we kind of just already have-
We kind of covered this previously, but just for the record and maybe avoid more confusion. So, this rezoning application before you is coming at the direction of the town council. As we covered, I believe, at their meeting back in September, the council voted to authorize the town manager to initiate a rezoning of the property from C3 to AR1, following our process here in Lundendary, which is to come to the planning board for its review and recommendation, back to the town council for first reading in public hearing to formally act on the rezoning request.
Kelly, help, help me with that real quick before we go on. This is a directive from the council or from the town manager, correct?
Technically, the town manager, I suppose, but-
Correct.
The council made a motion in September to move forward with the rezoning of the property, to initiate the process to rezone the property.
These two are here, they're technically not an applicant right now, correct?
They're not, that is the owner and his legal representation.
Okay.
We can move, but I just thought you'd be-
Yeah, I, yeah, I would ask you if you can sit, sit back, and then just when we get to public hearing, obviously, you're gonna come up, but formality's-
Understood.
All right, thank you. All right, Kelly, go ahead.
So, just to recap, so the property is 2 Litchfield, it is currently zone Commercial 3 with the historic district overlay. So, the request is to remove the Commercial 3 and historic district overlay, and simply rezone it to agricultural residential. As you can see on the screen, this property that we're talking about is the only red square up there, and as we covered previously, this is essentially the definition of what spot zoning looks like. Spot zoning is something that the town has made attempts to correct, you know, as long as I can see in the, in history here, to try and ensure that we have compatible land uses, abutting each other, to ensure that we are not showing any favoritism of the rezoned properties to one particular zone that's not consistent with the abutting zones, things of that nature that may implicate the town from a legal liability standpoint. So, again, the intent is to rezone the property to, back to its original zone, which was AR1, and eliminate this current issue we have here of spot zoning.
Thank you. All right, John, do you have anything?
Nothing. All right, board, who's up?
I said my piece.
Anybody else?
So, we can put it, or the applicant could put a, the, the owner could put a duplex on the property, right? And nothing bigger than a duplex to family?
Right, provided they need the required frontage and acreage, but yes, duplexes are permitted in AR1.
Yep.
They could go to ZVA, though.
We could, but today, by right, you can put a duplex on.
Would they be held to keep up any of the historical look and, anything to do with that, if they lose that designation they previously had? Like in, and how the design, in Boston, what can you do is when we had to design anything new, if we were to lose anything with the historical, we have the ability to almost mimic and look something to the effect of what was there? So, did they lose that, does that, can they just throw any square blocks up?
Yes.
So, I think we're kind of talking about two things as one-
We are, yes.
So, the property previously had a historic preservation easement, which had significant restrictions with respect to what you could do for the design essentially of the structures, interior and exterior, that was part of the council's other motion, which that has been lifted. The historic district, separate item, does not impose design standards and criteria per se, however, through our standard design review process here, as you know, applicants go through the Heritage Commission, and then they come to you as well, and which both of you have the opportunity to make recommendations, and ultimately decisions at this board level as to what architecture may be appropriate for whatever area we're looking at, so.
Suggest-
Yes.
We have architectural standards and guidelines in our site plan regulations, which would apply to any property.
Just to hit on the historical district, to clarify a little bit. Was this property part of the historical district?
It was.
It is part of the historic district.
It is?
It-
It was.
It is.
It is.
The overlay, which of course is shut off on me.
The property is a historic district.
So, the property itself is a historic district?
Yeah.
Do this hash on the line, that's the historic district overlay, the red is the C3.
But the historic easement has been-
Totally separate?
Correct. But I'm trying to make it more clear for everybody here and at home, the historic easement is, has been lifted.
I'm gonna do it one more time.
Yep. I just-
The property is currently zoned Commercial 3, and it has a historic district overlay-
Thank you.
For our Lundendary zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
But if, if you drive through that area, there isn't another historical thing around it, right? Like, I mean, you're, like, literally, that is the historic district.
Yes, it's the only thing inside of-
So, it's not like we're talking about changing something on the town common?
Correct. Which I don't even know that the town common is in, is the town common-
In our zoning ordinance, you have five properties that are cited as your historic district- In our zoning ordinance, you have five properties that are cited as your historic district areas. Tulichfield is one of them.
Thank you. Alright, uh, anything from the board? Well, uh, I am going to, seeing nothing from the board, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public? Come on up.
Can I reset?
Yeah, come, come right on up.
Good evening. My name is Laurie Gandy. I'm an attorney with Divine Millimet, here representing the owner, CC Properties LLC. Here with me is Richard Flyer, managing, member of the LLC. First, this is probably one of the most unique things that I've seen the town council do. As you, the board knows, I was a former employee for the town for years, and I never saw the town council come in and rezone and strip away a private property owner's rights. So I find this to be very unique and unusual and subject to various legal challenges. But I do have concerns over the process and the actual merit concerning this rezoning petition. Again, I am, this is very unique. I'm not sure that it's ever happened. And as this board knows, as a former employee, I am a big fan of checklist and making sure that the process is done correctly. In fact, I created the town's rezoning application. This process was initiated by the town council, and the town council is obligated to undertake certain actions, especially when it is seeking a zoning amendment for one parcel of land affecting only one property owner's rights. This board is familiar with the New Hampshire Business and Economic Affairs Planning Handbook, which provides an outline for zoning amendments in conjunction with the town's statutory obligation. And I just want to show you what those obligations are.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gandy.
What's this out of?
This is out of the New Hampshire Business and Economic Development. It's the planning handbook that you folks have that you use quite frequently. So this is just two pages, and it's from chapter three, page eight, and I highlighted the zoning amendment process because that's the initial process, the folk, the area that I wanted to focus on. So I did put on here one, two, and three. This is a zoning amendment put forward by the town council. So it says, when an amendment is proposed, the proposing body, which is the town council, and I, if you turn back to page eight, it says on the bottom, zoning amendments may be initiated in three ways, and number two is the governing body. So that's the town council. So if you go back to page nine, where I have one, when an amendment is proposed, the town council must submit the properly drafted article to the planning board. To my understanding, and I checked with the town today to see if there was anything submitted by the town council, so my client and I could be afforded due process and have the ability to understand what was happening, and there was nothing. So there was nothing that was submitted from the town council to this board with their reasonings outlining what they were doing and why they were doing that. So that's issue number one. The planning board must hold at least one public hearing prior to the vote at the annual special meeting, and that's, again, if this was going to a vote for the special meeting, but Lunedary has a town charter which delegates that authority to the town council. Then it says, notice of the planning board hearing must be posted in two places, published in a locally circulated newspaper or on the municipal website at least 10 days in advance of the hearing. And then, I know this was published in the Lunedary Times, thanks for doing that. My question is whether this was posted in two other public places. Because three says, in all three situations, the planning board must hold a public hearing with prior notice as provided in RSA 675:7. After the public hearing, then it goes on to say what the planning board may do, and if you look at 675:7, that spells out, notice of each public hearing shall be published in a paper of general circulation in the municipality, which it was, was published in the Lunedary Times, and shall be posted in at least two public places. So my concern is I have not seen that it was posted in two public places, and typically the town will post in the library and in the post office. I actually checked both of those, and there was no posting, so I just want to confirm before we proceed that we have met our statutory obligations for our notice requirements.
Kelly, can you talk on that?
My understanding is posted on the website and in the boards within town hall, our public-
Okay.
Boards.
Thank you.
That would not meet the statutory requirement for a public hearing.
Do we have a board in town hall?
We do, when you first walk in.
Is it the electronic thing?
Yeah, you're talk, are you talking to two TVs out there?
Yep, as well as in the planning office.
As far as the drafted article aspect of this, where the town council has to submit that, Kelly, do you have?
I provided the minutes of the meeting that the council provided there.
So that would suffice legally for a drafted article?
It is opposition legally. It's a draft article. We are entitled to due process to understand what the town is trying to do with our property rights. That would be in the form of a resolution or an ordinance, or something that gives us a little bit more detail as to why. I mean, I can guess, I can speculate, that's not our job. Due process entitles us to be known, to be afforded the opportunity to have everything presented to us. He is the property owner. We received nothing, nothing. And I went to town hall today to ask to see an application. Poor word choice on my part. There was nothing that was given to me, except for later on during the day, Kelly kindly sent me her staff memo, but that's not, that's her staff memo. Not what the town council wants, not what we should be afforded. And posting it here in town is not two other places. It's supposed to be two other public places. So again, it's our opinion that the legal statutory requirements were not meant, and this public hearing should be continued and properly re-noticed.
Can I just, sorry. No, I don't want to cut you off. I thought you were done.
Go ahead.
With respect to the article and the resolution, that comes at the council level, first reading, public hearing, in which we have the resolution drafted, because the council is the body that is making that decision. This process we're going through right now is a Lunedary process for our Lunedary zoning ordinance. The town council doesn't have to go through the planning board to make this decision. We're following the process that's outlined in our zoning ordinance, which is to get a recommendation from this board. Recommendation only. You're not making the decision tonight. You're recommending to, to the council what you would advise them to do.
But the council already voted?
They didn't make a decision, no one has made a decision as to whether or not to rezone the property. The council asked that we go through this process. So they, the council still will need a first reading and public hearing.
Okay.
Which, like I say, includes the resolution and the notice, the noticing that was just gone over.
Got it. Thank you.
And I'll add that, because this is a town council, town charter, form of government, section 8.14, land uses, says that any land use regulations ordinances, including amendments, it says by referendum must be adapted, adopted pursuant to state law. And if you look at the town council meeting minutes, what happened, it did reference state law, which is the statute that requires specific notice requirements. That was not met. So this is going to the planning board. We are here as the property owner without proper due process to understand what the town is doing as far as our property rights.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else before we continue with public comment?
So the board's choosing to continue a public hearing despite the lack of notice requirements?
I have members of the public here that I want to make sure have the same opportunity that you just did.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So just procedurally, if the board decides that my position is correct without any notice, everything that was said would be considered invalid because it's not a validly noticed public hearing? Jess?
It's fair.
Okay. Alright, um.
Anything else from the public? Are you, oh, you're-
Oh, no, no, I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay, keep going.
Yep. And then, also, the, just putting out all of my process issues, the notice that went out to the public did not indicate that it was a town council petition. It just said, you know, a petition to rezone, and it had my client's name on it as the owner. He's not initiating this rezoning petition. This isn't him. There was no indication that this was a town council petition saying that they're the ones who are initiating this process. That notice was, in our opinion, was deficient. There was no indication there. It just said that there's a zoning position, and it stated my client as the owner. So those are my issues with the process. Now I'm going to get into my concerns with the merits. So as this board is aware, and you've heard a little bit about it, in 2006, there was a lot of interesting things that the town decided to do. The property owners at that time wanted to sell the property. There was discussion with the town council about, if we sell it, what can we do? We want, we can't, if we sell it, we're not going to be able to make money, so we want to have it rezoned. C3, well, there's a house on it. Well, maybe we can put a historic overlay on the house, and we can do an easement, maybe. Okay, it was almost like they were brokering a real estate deal. So that happened, completely unique and unusual. So the town made a motion, and as Kelly explained very well, so thank you, Kelly. The town rezoned the property to C3 with a historic overlay district, so two zoning districts, and then they put a historic preservation easement deed on top of it. So that's what happened at that point in time, and at that point in time, the historic district, the second zoning designation, was basically the only, I don't want to say private property, but the only property outside of the town common area that was part of the historic overlay district.
Point order, point order, if this isn't public comment, why are they being allowed to, if this is not a legitimate public comment?
Well, that's her opinion.
Huh?
That's her opinion.
In her opinion, why is she being allowed to comment?
Because it's public. It's, that's her opinion, not our.
Thank you.
Yep.
The board has not made a determination on my opinion.
I, okay.
Yeah.
We will, yeah, hold on.
So we're clear here. The board is continuing with the public hearing.
I'm continuing with the public hearing.
Can I make a motion to, I can make a motion?
No, you can do it anyway.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue this, I, until we get some clarity here.
So you're in the middle of a public hearing right now?
Why are we even prepared for this thing?
Can I mention something? Aunt Laura, isn't a town pound one also?
The town com, the town common is, but not the town pound.
Okay.
The town common, yes.
I feel as though we need more information. Yes, the question is, do we want to continue to, do we want to continue to let the public speak on this? Or do we want to?
Yeah, we should continue, you know, to hear them out, and then so our decision.
Kelly. Kelly.
If you're, I want to be clear on what you're trying to figure out right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you trying to determine if you should proceed with a hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair.
That was my, that was the intent of my motion, just.
Okay. Because you want more information about?
I want more information, oh, thank you, Kelly. I want more information about the postings. I want to validate if what we did does meet regulations. I trust that it did, but I just want to trust and verify that.
Okay.
So that's, that's appropriate. It's obvious that there's a disconnect between, and I'm, and I'm just not, I'm not a legal, I'm not of legal mind, but I do, if something is being brought to, in front of me here, I just want some more clarity from wherever we can potentially get it. Something just doesn't feel right here, and I'm just, I'm trying to kind of see if we can put a pause on there, and if-
Can I just?
And I'm, I'm, if other members of the board feel differently, I will support my colleagues. Kelly, if you can just clear that up for me, I absolutely kind of respect that.
I'm trying to make sure we stay on.
Yep, go ahead.
So do you need to hear from your other board members before I chime in?
Um, no, I mean, do you guys, does anybody have anything to say?
I agree with Jeff.
I'm agreeing with Jeff.
Yep, I do.
Yes.
Kelly?
So procedurally, the board's position right now is that you want to hold off on the public hearing?
We're really already in public.
Continue this application to a future meeting? You're looking for more information or confirmation about the process?
Yes.
Yes, I guess, I agree with everything that you're saying. I just feel as though we're in a conversation here, and we, and if the board thinks otherwise, I'll just agree with the board.
That's all I'm trying to get at. It's not my decision to make.
I feel as though that we certainly need to continue this, but I also feel as though we're in the middle of-
What I'm trying to get at is, if your reason for continuing is because you don't-
I need more information.
The board doesn't think this was properly noticed, then you should not continue with the public hearing.
Okay. Alright. So what's you guys' opinion on that? Are you worried about how it was noticed?
I think it's good to verify rather than proceed, because we can't go back in time and undo it once we've done it.
Okay.
Clarification things is that you-
It doesn't hurt to push it. It doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt anything to push it, but I'm still, I'm still confused over who, who was the applicant? There is no applicant. This is the town of Lunedary deciding that they want to rezone something.
Because I think the only thing we're aware of, the town common, the director, the town manager, then from that, that point on, I really don't know what, what has happened until tonight.
May I make another point of order, please?
Sure.
Councilman Farrell should not be commenting on this, because he's a council member, so he's the petitioner. So he should not be involved in the decision about what you're going for.
I, I would think that would probably be where you would abstain like you did, I think, two votes ago on something tonight. Didn't you abstain once tonight?
Yep.
I just-
Let's stay on, if we're moving forward with the hearing.
Alright, so I'm hearing the board does not want to move on. We'd rather get a little clarification here. So Jeff did make a motion.
Need a second.
Second from Mr. Knights. All in favor, starting with Ann, please?
Ann Champa, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. Kelly, do you want a date now?
You need a date now.
It's procedural.
Say it again?
This isn't the recommendation.
You need a date now.
Okay, so let's continue, let's continue this to Wednesday, December the 10th, 2025, so, four weeks from today, five weeks from today? Five weeks from today. Do we need to, um, ask the council for anything? I, I mean, to me, what we're looking for is a legal opinion on if this was noticed correctly.
I'm going to provide you the procedural questions you have. And I can resend you what the council put in their motion.
So, so typically, when we push something, there's no re-noticing, right? Well, in this case, I would suggest maybe we want to do it different, maybe? I'm just thinking procedurally, right? When we push something, we, we usually say it's going to be December 10th, there's going to be no further notice, this is your final notice for this topic, so we, we need to-
Just from a, regardless of the end result of what I provide you, I, I would re-notice it regardless, just because of the confusion that ensued.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's fine. That's fine. Anybody got any questions? You guys got any questions? So you know, you understand what the expectation is moving out of this, what you need to do, what you need to provide us, come the 10th. Question for you, would, would the 10th be to clarify what we're asking, or would the 10th be?
No, you're going through a hearing process.
I get that, so-
Both.
That's what I'm asking. We can do them both at the same time. We can make a clarification and then have a hearing. If the clarification reason- We can make a clarification and have a hearing, if the clarification reasons that everything was noticed correctly. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. All right. See you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Those two are continued. We have no other business. Kelly and John, do you have anything?
Did you take a full vote on that motion?
Did we ever take it? Yeah, 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 no, we did. We did. Okay. Yep.
I'm doing this.
Yep. You're confusing me now, Kelly. Come on.
Because it was a procedural item, so this wasn't the recommendation.
He's not voting on the recommendation. He's voting on.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Which is fine.
Did you guys figure it out? What do we have for next week? Yeah, Mr. Chair.
All right, did you get ready to start?
Kelly, want to talk on next week before we get out of here?
Yep. So you have the continued propio matters, the concept, and the compliance alternative. You have a two-lot subdivision, the envisioned site plan for Technology Hill, and the PUD work session. There you go.
Okay.
So bring a snack, because it's going to be.
There is a good chance I won't be here.
I will not be here either, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Given that, is there anything you want to move around or leave it be?
I'll defer to you with respect to the ord, the work session.
Yeah. That's really the only one I'm wondering about. Does the board want, is the board comfortable without me being here for the work session? Or would you rather me here for the work session?
I.
I think you should be here.
I think you should be here.
Yeah, I think as many of us as possible should be here.
And I do apologize.
It's okay.
Another couple months and I should stop missing meetings, so.
So I, I'll.
I think it's fine to move it.
So we'll move it? You guys want to just do December 3rd or 10th? Or do you feel like we're going to be too busy?
It's already busy, so it doesn't matter to me.
Six of one, half dozen in the other? Bring the laptop, you're good to go, right?
That's.
Let's do, um.
So you have a couple options. We don't have to decide tonight, number one. Number two, we could have a special meeting, a work session, maybe.
You guys want to do a work session on the PUD?
I've seen that a bad idea.
Yeah.
I, I, in the initial timeline that I kind of tried to project out, again, to align this to get hopefully to the council in January for their process, I had another work session, and I had a hearing. I envisioned at least one of those being its own meeting to allow.
I remember us discussing that.
The board and the public, right, to, you know, have that be their primary focus. So if you want both to be its own meeting, the second work session and the hearing, we can figure that out.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I can talk to you offline about.
Yeah. We'll get everybody some dates. Go from there. Cool. All right. Anything else from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dean.
Before Tony. But Jeff wants to talk first.
Yeah, before he provides his administrative update. I just want.
Tell your master plan?
Yes. Really quickly, master plan update. We had a resignation from the master plan steering committee. That person that resigned was a planning board member.
I resigned from the master plan committee.
So we are looking to add a planning board representative at that point. So we'll probably be entertaining a motion at next week's meeting. Tomorrow, we have our land use workshop, which is going to be an artsy-craftsy type activity, where it's going to be very active with maps and such, and community involvement. The steering committee has been doing yeoman's work on your, ensuring that participants are here, and it's also all over social media and was very well represented in our, in the Lunandary Times over the past two weeks. So we do want to kind of, you know, definitely acknowledge that, but we are definitely moving ahead. We have new representatives from Southern Hampshire Planning Commission that are really kind of, you know, working with us, working with town staff, keep, you know, having a really good, complete plan. So Kelly and Kristen, thank you for the work that you did there. So, yeah, I feel that we are definitely, you know, moving in the right direction, and I do want to thank Jake for his, his, his time and his energy over the last year to kind of get us to where we are, so. So thank you. And thanks for leaving me. I mean.
No problem.
Wait, let me, let me get that knife out of your back.
What, what time's the meeting tomorrow night?
Tomorrow, yeah, sorry. Thanks, Ann. It's at 6:00 PM.
Six to what?
Six to eight.
Okay.
Six to one more, Jeff.
Six to eight.
Could I ask if, Mr., Mr. Chair of the master plan committee, would you be all right if we asked the board if there's anybody that has interest, so come voting time next week, people on the board have got an idea of who wants to, if anybody wants to be on it?
Yes.
Is there anybody that would be interested in taking my place on the committee for the master plan?
Only full members are, are allowed.
Um, I don't think so. I think it was just put up, we put it up as just a planning board member.
Correct.
Yeah, because Jeff, Jake, you know, represented the planning board.
Excuse me?
I think we have, what, the goals to have it done in April or May, so.
February.
February.
February. So there was like a four-month time period that it concerned.
It's a compressive.
Not great.
But it's a lot of.
So before you do that, back to tomorrow night, can all, we were all invited. If we all show up, is that, is that a meeting problem? What are we going to do? Maybe if we all show up.
I'll leave. I'll say what, I'm not showing up.
It's already noted as a public meeting.
So we're okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody that has interest on being on the committee?
I do.
Good point.
Well, this is kind of.
Our younger members.
I'm kicking you under the table, Mr. Rugg. Is there anybody that comes in to be talking?
So let me, so let me clarify what the time commitment is. What, we meet monthly, generally, six to eight, on the third Thursday of the month, where we discuss happenings, ensuring that we're, you're keeping up with, with our plan. We, throughout that time, you know, there, there'll be committee homework, trying to get a good example of what that homework would entail moving forward, but you're kind of, really kind of championing the entire effort, you know, between meetings, and how, when whatever medium you feel you're best suited for, whether that's, you know, such like that. One of the biggest kind of items that we're probably, after the land use workshop happening tomorrow, we'll be getting into, you know, further analysis, as well as, you're really drafting the, you know, part two of the, of the master plan, so we'll be reviewing that and such. So time commitment, two hours a month minimum, third Thursday of the, of the, of the month. There might be one additional meeting, but that's.
The problem that I have is, this is starting next week. This is my travel season. I'm, I'm just not here.
Yeah, I think, because you're, you're a voting member, you need to be a full-time voting member.
No. Peter said no.
No, we just, Arthur, we just put it as a member of the planning board.
Yeah.
So, but my point is, I'm, I'm, I'm not here.
It's not.
So.
Can't do it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, definitely think about the, yeah, think about it. We'll entertain a motion next week, and then.
I will, I would consider it, because I bet you about every meeting here is anyway.
And I'm not going to be here, so don't phone me, because. That's the reason why I can't do it, is because I'm not around.
You got a phone call.
Starting this month until after May. You know, the first two.
Sounds good.
The first two Wednesdays a month, I'm, I'll be here, but at any rate.
So I, I do hear that Mr. Rugg is interested, so keep that in mind come voting time.
Jason might also be interested as well.
It's, it's possible too, because I would welcome Jason to participate, because get some of the younger members involved.
Jesus, that's the first time I've been called that in a month.
Well, I, I think the criteria is.
It's kind of funny, this, this, this whole chair, this whole board's really split right down the middle.
This way is noticeably younger, that way is noticeably older. You, you both can go to the meetings and contribute, you, it doesn't have to be one person.
The meetings are open. Anyone can come contribute and such like that. So, again, thank you, and any questions come, come tomorrow.
So Jeff, thank you, thank you for all your work on that, on that item, and I know it's a lot of hours and a lot of time away from your family, and, and the town really needs to have this document, and so I, I personally appreciate what, what it is you're doing, so.
That's a good dedicated members.
Yes, the, the entire committee is incredible. It's an incredible committee.
That said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to announce that tonight, as a matter of public record, that we had three options for the public to participate. Did only participate in two of the three options that we had this evening. While we're here, if I could do a second item, if that's okay with you?
Yes, sir.
So I have a little bit of a report from the most recent Heritage Commission meeting, and so it's kind, a little bit of a lot to unpack, unpackage at this point, but I will tell you that, that Tony doesn't want to do anything. Tony doesn't want to necessarily change anything. Tony doesn't want to do stuff. What's Tony want to do has nothing to do with what this board does. And that was the topic of conversation at the last, at the last thirty, thirty to forty-five minutes of that meeting. Okay? So I want to be very clear that I am one person that talks a lot and wants to get things done, but it's the planning board that makes decisions, not Tony. So I want to be, I want to be very clear about that. The other thing I heard at that meeting, which was, which was very disappointing, was that, that the, if the Heritage Commission doesn't have an opinion on something, and it goes to the board, then nothing gets done. Then the developer pretty much, oh, willy-nilly, can do whatever they want. That wasn't said, those words weren't said, but that was the tenor of what was going on. There was also mention of, of on Old Rum Trail, a developer putting up a, a, a monument to the history and heritage of that particular part of town, and the, the Heritage Commission gave itself, or at least one person gave the Heritage Commission the kudos for getting that done. And that was actually Ann Champa that did that, at a planning board meeting, and said to the applicant, I, I want you to do that. Will you do that? And the applicant said yes. Okay? There were many other instances where, when Arthur was the chair, he sent the applicant away because buildings didn't look like the Lunandary Way, or things weren't done. Ann Champa had another occasion where she changed the windows in, in one of the buildings because it was too metallic, or I don't remember exactly what it was, but the windows got changed. That happened at this level. Tony Di Francesco did a bunch of stuff with Belly Band, you remember those, those meetings? Those were fun. Lot of laughs, to, to make things look better. Also, Jason did roof design setbacks, and, and had one developer add, instead of just clapboards, how about you put some shakes or shingles at the peaks, or, or whatever it was, for one developer. So there's a lot that happens at this, at this meeting that has to do with that kind of stuff, and I, and I think it needs to be said, needs to be said out loud. Now, what I, what I have done, and hopefully it's going to come up again, is I have followed up on the memorandum and the position paper that our former town manager produced on October 5th of 2024. If you don't remember that, I have copies of it here. But basically, what it says is that the, that the current Heritage Commission is doing things outside of their purview, and that there is no record that gives them the authority to do what they're doing. That's what the position paper says. My comment at one of the most recent meetings was, are we going to talk about this or not? That's all Tony is doing. Okay? And I hope we do get to it, because there's some things that need to change, because even, even, even their, their, the charge that they have on their website, if they work for us, we never approve that. You look at their website, we, we, we never said, yep, that's what we want you to do. And in all the literature we have here, and, and the, and the memorandum that Mike Malaguti sent on October 5th, he says that. 67444A Advisory Review Authority at the suggestion of the planning board. Says it three different times in the IRSAs, and it also says it, it's also in conflict with our regs in the Site Plan Regulation Book. So there's a lot of things to discuss here, but what Tony wants to do is have the board discuss this further or not. So thank you for entertaining me, thank you for the soapbox, and hopefully we can get that, at one point, I thought we were scheduled, I can't remember if we still are or not, but.
I think we did talk about.
I think we talked about the second week in December.
People believe December chance, we put everything else.
Yeah.
Guess you were right about bringing a snack.
Tony.
Yeah.
Can I get a coffee, man?
Yeah.
Again, I don't know if you're looking for a, a planning board only meeting or a joint meeting, does that?
I think it's really more of a planning board only meeting.
I think the planning board has to decide how much.
We need to put the guardrails up as to.
Yeah.
You know, what, what?
The planning board needs to decide what's a one point wants to do.
Do you want for, you know, advice?
Would you like to tack it on to the PUD work session? Because it would be, really be more of a work session type.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Or we can put it at the end of another meeting, but.
I like the work session.
No, it's.
It is a work session.
It's a work.
That's what it is. It's trying to figure out, and, and I want to be clear, I've said it a hundred times, that, that permission provides a valuable service. It does, there's no question about it. Mr. Malaguti's position paper used the phrase mission creep over the years. That's what's happened. How much do we need from them or not? And, and understand that what we decide is probably going to result in some.
Change.
Changes in our current regulations. Because our regulations don't, right now, our regulations don't match what they're doing, at all. So, that's where we're at. Thank you, appreciate you all.
I'm fine with that. We'll do it during the work session.
Thanks, Tony.
And I can circulate the memo that's being referenced to you all in.
That's fair.
Yeah, if you would, if, if you wouldn't mind, if you could assign the assistant town manager the task of making sure that the Heritage Commission gets a copy of that, that March, what does it say, March 5th, 2024? March 5th, 2024?
October.
October 5th.
October 5th, 2024, that memo. Um, I think it will help clarify what it is and why it is. Why is this a topic? Well, it's the topic because of that position paper. And in talking with current staff, there's also the recognition that there's, there's some disconnects there, that, that it doesn't, it doesn't match up. So we, we got to do something. What it is, is up to you guys of, of what we do, but we got to do something. Because right now, the, the tail is wagging the dog and it doesn't know it. My opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine if Kelly wants, Kelly, if you want to, if you could pass that along to the members of the.
Line of department, we'll take care of it.
The Heritage Commission, that would be, be fine. See how that just got passed right off?
Nicely done.
Um, yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, you know, you're going to come prepared. Come prepared with what, what you're thinking the expectation should be, so we can.
Well, yeah, but, but understand, I want everybody to be thinking of it. I want, I want, I, I will, I would like to understand, A, why are we here? Why do you think we're here? Arthur could, could give us some insight on that, because it's been around forever, just look at it. So, and I can say that.
Thanks, Tony.
No, that's it. I can say that.
His hair is greater than yours.
So.
Yeah, I don't have much of.
So, so, and, and, and also, what do you think this board needs? And in the course of a meeting, what, what do we need from them? What is it that, that we can do or not do? Um, there's a whole faction, faction of, of the building community, the development community that doesn't like coming to Lennderry, and I've heard them say it, they've said it to me personally, because it takes forever, there's too many meetings. Well, so, can we fix that or not? I don't know if we can, I don't know. But again, that, that's up to the, the, the collective board to make that decision, what we want to do differently or not.
I feel as though this might be a little bit easier than we think it is, in terms of, I, I, I mean, you know, realistically, I, I feel as though, but, I don't even know. Does the Heritage Commission have like a checkwa- checklist of requirements people need to?
I think we can probably capture all that in our work session.
No, I know, I know, I know. Trust me, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to belabor this, but what I'm getting at is I, I think it's much easier than we, than we think it is.
It isn't formal like the planning.
No. I think, I think.
It involves more of a kind of discussion and suggestions.
I think the solve here is much easier than we think it is, and, and I would be willing to bet with inside of an hour, we can get a set of guard, no, I'm dead serious, a set of guardrails put up that works for everybody.
If I may, I think the, the simplest starting point is just staff can come up here to tell you how it actually works now.
Yeah.
You can go from there.
I, I, I think the way I'm looking at it, and I'm a top of twenty.
It's like I could almost do this right now, but I'm not going to.
It works for, for staff probably more.
Yeah.
So staff should have probably the major input into it, they know how it works, how things flow.
I mean, there was, there was a, there was a statement made at the end of that meeting to Ke- to Kelly that said, "Well, we, we can ask questions that the planning board can't ask."
No. They ask questions on behalf of the planning board.
Yeah, well, exactly, but see, that, there's, that's where the disconnect is. When, when you hear something like that, my head wants to blow up, but, but it, that's where the disconnect is. But that's, but, but to be fair, that's our fault.
Yeah.
Because we have not given direction.
I agree.
We have not given process, we have not given, that's, that's our fault collectively.
I agree.
And so, let's fix it or not, but let's at least talk about it.
I like it. Anything else? Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
I have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks.